Yep, this time.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, December 30th at 5:30 PM. And this is exactly 50 years from when the town first was incorporated. Please stand. Please stand for our invocation, followed by a moment of silence. We have nobody for the invocation?
Wouldn't give it to him.
Mr. Minchuck, please.
Heavenly Father, we would really invoke thy blessing. May all our actions be guided by thy hand as we work together for the betterment of this town. Listen to thy name. Amen.
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 Moment of silence, please. Thank you, Jeff. Now our pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance.
Praise. Of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to welcome back Kelly White Gibson to the dais. She's been out for a while. Welcome back, Kelly.
Thank you.
Since you're back, you can call the roll, please.
Sure.
Mr. Spann.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck.
Here.
Mrs. Uszak.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
And Mr. Bella.
Here. Six present. Thank you. I'll ask the council to add the accounts payable voucher that was in your packet tonight.
Motion to approve.
Motion to add this to the agenda, second by Mr. Minchuck. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? This will be added.
One second, Mr. President. Can you go and bring people out of your office?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. President.
I'm gonna wait for Mr. Spann.
Oh, that's okay. They're coming.
Well, she'll figure it out.
Okay, she was passing the speed.
The word got out, we have cake.
Anytime you say cake, man. That's it. That's the key word.
Glad we got the she-cake.
Cheese.
Cheese make my nose bleed.
The record show that Mr. Spann has joined us this evening. Don.
Please say it.
Hey, how you doing?
I'm good. How about yourself?
Good. Glad to be back.
Glad to have you back.
Council entertains a motion to approve the accounts payable voucher just turned in this evening for January 11.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to approve. Any discussion?
Mr. President, are these other two items under this Gmail from Trista? Is Trista here?
No, these are going on to the resolutions that will follow.
These go to the resolutions?
Yeah, they go to there.
Okay.
Trista's somewhere in the building.
Trista's here. She's here.
There she is in the back.
Any other discussion? Kelly, why are we doing another voucher?
Um, I think we had some late late things to pay.
Okay.
So we need to add them on, get stuff paid before the end of the year, transfers and things like that, tip settlement payroll.
Okay, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to general orders. We have no ordinances tonight, but we do have some housekeeping resolutions. Resolution 21 dash 100.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway, second by Mrs. Uszak. Discussion? Trista?
I would draw your attention, please, to two items. Under the Clerk Treasurer Department number one, the item now supported by the invoice should be $4,820. That is the fifth item down there, right above the line. That makes the new total to be $20,370. That money is available in the clerk's budget for those items.
My motion is still good, Mr. President.
The second change then is the email that Mr. Pettit referred to from Mavis Tire, an invoice that Ms. Sanfrentalo had been waiting for to add $2,111.20. That new total then for the police department becomes $6,085.24. Again, all money is available within the police department budget.
Your motion stand, Mr. Hardaway?
Yes, my motion stands.
And my second too.
One second, please. Your second stands.
My second stands.
Mr. Pettit.
These invoices weren't ready Tuesday night at the regular council meeting?
No, not the ones for the tires. I don't know about the other one, but the one for the tires were.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution 21 dash 101.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Spann for approval of resolution 21 dash 101. Trista?
As I understand it from Stacy, there were some bills that hadn't been paid yet for the fire department, and so she wanted the money encumbered for them to show that they were still out of this year's budget. I believe she sent over her invoices or bills for the packet to Linda for your packet.
Do we have a total, Trista, or do we have to do our own math?
On the fire department?
Yes.
Well, they're from two different funds, and so you have the total for Fund 225 below the line there at $1,673. And then the 484 for Carrier and Gable is out of 410, Fund 410, so that is its own total.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Well, we already, I think.
We already got that.
Okay.
And your second.
I'm waking up.
All right.
Give me a chance.
Any other discussion on the resolution? I'll add that really department heads are doing what we asked them to do, is encumber some of these funds so that we're not, we don't lose them for the new year, so.
That's good.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 21 dash 102.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Minchuck for approval. Trista?
This relates to a cleanup item with one of your funds, the CARES fund, obviously, that was discussed the last few weeks when your reviewers were here on site. I was able to speak with Mr. Todd Caldwell from the State Board. He returned my call from prior, returned my call on Wednesday, yesterday? And we were able to speak about this resolution. So if you remember, there was a partial reimbursement of the CARES money for police department overtime. The normal reversing process wasn't able to be accomplished based on the accounting system, and he did authorize that we can simply transfer it to the general fund because it was approved expenditure. And this will allow you also, within this resolution, to close that fund out then because obviously the purpose, the revenue and the expenditures for the CARES money is now completed.
Very good.
What was that amount for the partial reimbursement?
The amount that you see here in the middle of the page, $1,680.51.
Okay. Did that go back to the police department?
Well, it goes into the general fund.
Okay.
But ultimately, because of the shuffle, yes, you know, they would still be entitled to use that money. It was for overtime that they had spent related to COVID, so the state reimbursed money to the town for that. And so it's available now for future use.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 21 dash 103.
So move.
Transfer of funds.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway?
I'll second. Second.
Chair, recognize Mr. Minchuck for a second. This one's a big one, Trista. Can you enlighten us?
Sure. Ms. Rosas handles Departments Two and Seven for you, obviously the Town Council and the Town Administration Departments within the budget. There were a few line items that were negative as we near the end of the year. This, these transfers that you see will allow those to be positive line items. They are not additions to the budget. It's just simply a shifting of some of your allotted funds.
Any other discussion by the council?
Trista, the decrease of $53,000 in the health insurance. Are we, that's not gonna stress us?
No, no, the bill has been paid already for December. This was extra money that was in that line item. The secondary fund has been used and paid some of that life insurance bill this year as well, which allowed this remainder to remain. I think that the ultimate cost came in a little bit lower than expected for 2021, which also aided in having this extra money.
Okay.
Good question. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Before we move into the next part of this agenda, I have something here. Our town has reached a milestone today. December 30th, 2021 marks Maryville's semi-centennial. Incorporated 50 years ago on this date, and while it is important to look back when it all began, it is even more important to look toward the future. In 1972, with a population of 16,000, the first small-town budget of just over $700,000 allowed Maryville to provide services to the new town of Maryville residents. Services like street repairs and snow plowing, planning and zoning department, and police protection with only 13-member police force. Today, with over 160 employees, the town provides those same services, but now with 61 sworn police officers, full-time firefighters, an active redevelopment commission concentrating on economic development, all with a general budget fund of about $11 million, supported by a variety of tax increment financing districts generating over $20 million. With the completion of our recent State Board of Accounts audit and careful planning by the council and Clerk Treasurer, we can offer today that the state of our town is strong. With many new developments, both residential and commercial, already on the books for 2022, we look forward to moving into our next 50 years with a great staff, determined department leadership, an experienced town manager, and eager and dedicated elected officials. As we begin our next semi-centennial tonight, moving into our future, we would like to offer the following motions before our planned celebration at the end. Councilman White?
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate the opportunity to reach out to the community and tell them what we're trying to do, and I think we've made some progress in terms of diversity. One thing I would like to say, this has been a pretty tough two years, and what I mean by that, Mr. President, is it's been a lot going on, not just here in Maryville, but throughout the entire country, and I think things seem to be settling down a little bit in the terms of specifically nationwide. So I would like to make a motion, Mr. President, to continue with our efforts to promote diversity and inclusion throughout our town government, uplifting our community as well. It's very important that we not only do it here. This community is really a diverse community, and they need to see the leadership here basically on board with the same way they're feeling, because they're feeling it. Maryville residents love this town. And they love the way things are going. So my my motion will be to continue to uplift our community through our education outreach efforts and to continue to talk with our residents. Let them know how we really feel about this situation. It's very important. It's a lot going on in this nation now. I think you see it every day, some kind of way on the news or internet. There's always something going on, so that's my motion, Mr. President. Second the motion.
Motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Spann to continue with their efforts to promote diversity and inclusion throughout our town government, uplifting our community through education and outreach programs. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hardaway?
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone that's sitting up here knows, for, we've been searching for a Parks Director for some months now. And we were fortunate enough back September, back in September, to hire an assistant director at that time. And as we hired that assistant director, we continued our search looking for a Parks, looking for a Parks Director, somebody to take the leadership and do the things that we needed to do in order for the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, as well as the parks, to continue to grow. Having been unsuccessful, as we were, and with the consent of all seven of us, I think that we have found that person. And so at this time, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that our current Assistant Parks Director, Mr. Terrence Price, be promoted to the position of Parks and Recreation Director effective January the 1st at the rate that's outlined in the 2022 salary ordinance. That's my motion.
Second. I'll definitely second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway and a variety of seconds by Mr. Pettit and Mr. Minchuck to promote Terrence Price to the position of Parks Director. We're gonna do a roll call on that, yes, ma'am. So, Mr. Hardaway, we will do a roll call before you begin any ceremonial thing.
Mr. Spann?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Happy New Year. Yes.
And President Bella?
Yes.
All seven of us.
Motion carries.
On behalf of the Maryville Town Council, we would like to congratulate you first for your first 93 days. You've been a stellar employee. You've done a lot of things so far to try to bring the Community Center into the 21st century. We appreciate it. We have confidence in you. We look forward to everything that you have to offer. And just know that you have the support of the council in every endeavor and the support of those people in the front row and the second row that are going to be stellar people to help you get to where you need to get to. Thank you. We'd ask you to make a speech, but we don't want to promote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. Next item, Council President and Vice President, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we retain the current Council President and current Council Vice President for the ensuing year.
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Minchuck with a second by Mr. Pettit to keep myself on as President and Richard Hardaway as Vice President of the Council for the 2022 calendar year. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to Police Commission Attorney Appointment, Marge Uszak.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to keep and retain rather Mike Deppi for our attorney for the police department. He's been a resident of Maryville for several years and involved with Maryville too, so I hope he stays. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Marge.
It's all right.
Motion by Mrs. Uszak with a second by Mr. Pettit to retain Attorney Michael Deppi as the Police Commission Attorney and Police Department Attorney for 2022. Chief, would that be okay with you?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Go ahead.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Town Attorney, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to retain Cop Pinkus and Dolan as our professional legal counsel for the Town Council, Plan Commission BZI, and Redevelopment Commission Joe has done an outstanding job. I can't say enough about this young guy. I met him when he was at the Chamber of Commerce before he went to law school and was wowed by him then, and I'm still wowed by you, Joseph. What you go through with the seven of us, you couldn't pay me.
I make a second. I will second that.
You could have.
And I will also comment, Joe has had several years of experience with different boards, and he's doing a real good job now. I have known him for at least 20-some years.
You've known him since I've been this big.
I've known him since he worked at his grandfather's bar, the gig, and he was a good cleanup man. And the ironworkers loved him.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Uszak to retain Joe again for next year. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back, Joe.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to time capsule, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we create a time capsule, display it at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center decorated in Minchuck blue. And that it will be opened 50 years from right now.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spann.
We should not second that. That's after the Minchuck blue.
Open for discussion.
None, Mr. President.
I have something to discuss. This was one of the originality books that was donated tonight by Sharon Christ and Bud Christ, so this would be nice to go into the time capsule.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna pass it down to you, Jeff. Not that you're gonna be the one filling the time capsule, but we have our first item to put into it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Leonard, would you like to go in the time capsule and pop out?
I'm already in the time capsule. I'm just running out of time. That's the thing.
I didn't get a photo. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Financial Advisor, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make a motion to retain Cinder and Dalton as the Town Council's financial advisors for the year, for the 2022 calendar year.
Second.
A motion from Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit to retain Cinder Dalton as our financial advisor for 2022. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Neighborhood Streets, Mr. Spann.
Yes, I like to see the Neighborhood Streets review parking ordinances. I've noticed a lot of people parking in the street when it's unnecessary, and when we have plow season, it's very difficult to get those streets, that snow removed. So I think it's important that we make sure we keep an eye on that.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Spann, second by Mr. White. Did you actually want to do like a traffic study, Don? Is that what you mean? I think our.
Well, I think, I think the police department does a pretty good job of that, and then we have code enforcement going around, because people will put chairs out there.
Like Chicago? Chicago.
They'll put chairs out there.
Hammond, do that Hammond too, don't they?
Now, what is the plow truck gonna do, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Probably to substantiate the change in ordinance. President Bella, at this time, we'd probably want to do a traffic study too, though.
Would that be okay, Don?
Yes, sir.
Your second stand, Mr. White?
Yes.
Very good. Any other discussion?
I got one thing.
Mr. Hardaway?
Mr. Spann, as you look at this thing, we've got some streets now that probably need to be one-way streets going north and south. So I'd like, I know there's one down in my ward right now that should be a one-way street, Chief, Washington Street.
Right.
It should be a one-way going north, and so if we could look at that and incorporate that into whatever you come up with.
That'd be fine.
It'd be greatly appreciated, sir. Thank you.
Oh, another thing too, Don.
Washington Street from 57th to 55th.
Okay.
And Don, with the snowfall coming now, cars are not supposed to be parked on the street with two inches of snow, and they're still doing it. And the snowplows have a hard time getting through, but the police department, they've been good with watching and the code enforcers, but we still have to continue that with a lot of watching, okay, Chief?
Wholeheartedly agree with you, Marge. The last year I had that problem on 65th.
Right.
Where all these $300,000 homes are, and there was a guy across the street fixing cars. He had 15 cars out there. And the precinct committee man called me. I went over there and we got tickets on everything and about to tow them, they got those cars moved in.
Good.
It was just ridiculous, you know? I got a $300,000 home.
And somebody's repairing cars. I think one of the things that's gonna help us this year, Mr. President, is that the code enforcement have laptops in their computers now, in their car, in their vehicles. So as they drive around, they don't have to get the license plate, come back in and run a check and then go back out. Now they can, they can tow on the spot. So if there's something, if there's a violation, they don't have to worry about it. Just, you know, write it up and then call whoever tows and let's get it off the street. I think that's the message that we need to send to the public, is that we take this very serious. People, you've got 10 people living in the house with 10 cars, and the driveway won't hold them all, and so therein lies the problem. So, but that shouldn't be our problem, and it shouldn't be your neighbor's problem either. So I think that if we hit it the way that it's supposed to be, when you hit people in their pocketbook, they understand, right? So, that's all I have to say.
Very good. Any other comments?
Yes, they're parking the semis in the neighborhood.
Yes.
On their driveways. I hate to bring it up, but I do have Vicky and Tiffany watching. They have given out several tickets last week over to semis. So I hope that they discontinued that parking semis in rural, in our neighborhood streets.
Mr. White?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I did have a question I wanted to add to the towing of vehicles, because I thought that our ordinance actually had to give a person at least 24 hours before they can tow a vehicle, and the reason I'm saying that, Mr. President, is because it happened to me. And I never got a ticket or anything. I think, you know, we talked about it before, and I'm out there in my T-shirt asking this guy not to tow the vehicle, because I told him it wasn't snow on the ground when I went there. So I'm just asking, is the, is the ordinance, how many hours, 24 hours? 48?
They usually give them a warning to go first.
I don't think it's a 24 hours, because the sign says after two inches of snowfall.
Right.
That's what the sign says. The sign doesn't say 24 hours later.
Some of them don't have signs there, though.
Well, yeah, but there's signs at the entrance to every.
Actually, I think it was. No, it wasn't under commissary.
That was a while ago.
Yes, yes. And the reason I brought that up is because I didn't get a ticket, and I still, when I heard where it hit you in the pocket, well, it did hit me in the pocket, and I thought I could have moved, but that's done. I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you. Mr. President, I was stating in my ward, we got these beautiful homes, and there's no parking signs. This guy across the street, man, he had 25 cars out there.
Well, we'll ask Vicky to give us, give us a copy of the ordinance, snowplow ordinance, Vicky, street.
It doesn't require the leave and tag.
Can you give us a copy of it? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Item Nine, the RDC Bond Counsel, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to retain Barnes and Thornburg, as well as London Witty as Bond Counsel and our financial advisor. These two firms have been doing work for the RDC in the three TIF districts for more than 15 years, and they are, without a doubt, the best in the state of Indiana at what they do. I can't applaud Tom and Bob enough for everything they've done for us, so.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uszak to retain London Witty and Barnes and Thornburg. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit. Moving on to 61st Avenue, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President, and also I'd like to thank the entire council here. As you know, that part of Maryville, it needs to be brightened up a little bit, and I appreciate the council looking at and wanting to bring economic development there and look at some things. I have looked at some parts of, of that area as well, and I see there's some other opportunities.
I have looked at some parts of that area as well, and I see there's some other opportunities, maybe for some housing and something of that nature. But I really appreciate the fact that, you know, the council says that, you know, we can make that, to do an economic development plan with streetlights and other amenities, not enemies, amenities, to, as you say, Mr. President, to bring back the glorious days when that area was really pumping and humping. Right now, it just needs a lot of help, and I appreciate the council allowing me to make this motion to make that happen.
Motion, Mr. White, second by Mr. Hardaway, to begin plans to revitalize Sixty-first Avenue and Broadway shopping area with an economic development plan, streetlights and other amenities to bring that area back to its, as you said, glory days.
Absolutely.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Leonard.
Thank you.
Dog park, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, I will make my motion that we will have our very first ever dog park here in Maryville, located just off of Seventy-third and Broadway. It'll be for all of our town residents to enjoy, including our free residents.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Hardaway. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Master plan, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is kind of an obvious one, ladies and gentlemen. Being the largest town in the state of Indiana, population-wise, thirty-eight and a half square miles, the development that we've seen explode in a mariplex of the crossroads, we definitely need to have this next motion done and started in 2022. We need to begin work on a new town master plan, strategic development plan, updating of the zoning ordinance. We now have Angie Chilcutta on as economic development director, with Pat Reardon, with Sheila Shine. These items need to be desperately, plus we have all the census information, the demographics from the 2020 census. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to begin work in 2022 for a new town in Maryville strategic and master development plan and determine funding for associated costs that will move Maryville forward to the next decade.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White. Sounds like a great plan.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Planting of trees, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion, since Maryville has turned fifty years old, we need a little bit of work, and I challenge Matt Lake with the stormwater to replace or plant five hundred trees, new trees, in the next two years, Matt. And we also have to do some repair to damaged sidewalks throughout the town where other trees have been uprooted during these big storms, and they're uprooted in all areas. So, Matt, I hope you could appease us with this motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. Pettit. So, Matt, you did hear correctly, that's five hundred.
Where are you gonna get five hundred trees, Matt?
Holbert.
Holbert, yeah.
It'd be like Johnny Appleseed walking around.
We do have a grant with US Forest Service right now. We're waiting to see what the results would be. If we do get awarded that grant, we'll be getting a thousand trees. So hopefully, we get a word back around.
Double the amount you asked for.
I'll amend. You want to amend your motion, Marge?
Do we go to?
A thousand trees? Well, should I amend my motion to a thousand trees or leave it at five hundred?
I think five hundred is aggressive.
Let's shoot low.
We'll just let you work with it, Matt.
We can always revise the motion next year.
True, very true. Thank you, Matt.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Traffic study, Mr. Span.
Traffic study?
Number fourteen on our agenda there. Similar to the neighborhood one, but this is the intersections.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, we were having some, like I was telling about those cars, we're having a few problems like that. Not in my ward, I don't see a lot, but I got one that was major there. Guy working on his own cars out there, that's just ridiculous.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yes, before, Don, I appreciate you putting this out there for us to look at. I would like to know if this is appropriate at this time to, since we're talking about traffic lights and things of that nature. I really love it when I go through Crown Point, got really nice lights. So, Don, maybe one day you'll get a chance to go out there and look at those, and maybe we can bring similar type, because we need to finish being a first-class community here. And I think those type of lights, so I second it.
All right, very good. Second by Mr. White. Questions or comments?
Just real quick, I think one point, and I'm sure Sean will agree with me, one point that definitely needs to be looked at with all the development we got going on by a mariplex, all those blue vans coming out on the Broadway, that's one thing that's definitely gonna have to be addressed. That's an all-night meeting, but right now, I think it's just a point we need to make.
Good point. I believe Steve's already talked to NIPSCO about putting at least streetlights up all the way down from Ninety-third to One Hundred First, right, Steve?
Yes, I have, and we've also, earlier this year, we also had a meeting with Crown Point and Endot about the whole Broadway corridor from Ninety-third Avenue all the way south to US Two Thirty-One, some widening, some restriping. That's gonna get revisited here very shortly. So hopefully, it'll help out the traffic, at least for our portion. So we are looking into that with Endot as well.
Thank you, Steve.
Super. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. New town hall, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. As everyone's aware, we own the sixteen acres in back of town hall. Pat and Joe worked on that diligently, and there is an opportunity there to create a municipal campus setting whereby we would construct a new town hall on that property. And Chief Cuttino, you would be in charge of this facility in the future. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to begin discussions and conceptual designs for a new town hall on the recently purchased property behind our existing town hall, and include a new park, walking path, dog park, retail space for a multi-story new building to service Maryville for the next fifty years.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak. Any other discussion besides a wow?
He said a lot.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit. Moving on tonight to diversity training, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, we spent a great deal of time this year giving our employees training, diversity training. And we've got the last two groups that will be going in starting the first week of next year, and that will include that. That'll take care of probably a hundred and sixty employees, plus the council and the clerk treasurer. So at this time, Mr. President, I'd like to make a notion that we continue our diversity, inclusion, and equality training program for the year 2022 for all town associates, including elected officials.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. White, for continuing our efforts on diversity, inclusion, and equality training programs for the new calendar year. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would like to pass my gavel down to Mr. Hardaway and temporarily step down as chairman to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to keep Maryville open for another fifty years and challenge the town council, all future town councils, and any other elected officials, boards and commissions, conservancy districts, to do all in its power to see that our town prospers in the future.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Bella, second by Councilman Span, that we keep our town open for the next fifty years and empower everyone, that elected officials and conservancy districts to continue down the path that we've started. Is there any discussion? Any questions?
Will we remain a town for the next fifty years?
Marge, fifty years from now, nobody gonna know that we sat here.
Okay, I will second that.
Your time capsule will tell them.
Our time capsule, right.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway. Madam Clerk Treasurer, anything to add on this very special meeting?
Just happy to be back, and I am just so pleased to see all of you all and to have had, worked with everybody, and we've done a lot of good work this year, so happy to be.
At this time, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for refreshments.
Second.
So we do have refreshments and a birthday cake in the back room here. We invite everyone here to come back and have a bite to eat and a piece of cake and help us celebrate our fiftieth birthday tonight. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
And this was a very good special meeting.